Do have a quorum present. So I am going to call this special meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order. And as you are able, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. You can be seated. I'm going to ask if the clerk would now please call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Here.
Danielle Drozd.
Here.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Here.
Beth Manke Hut Wagner.
Here.
Richard Laverrier.
Here.
Amy Parati.
Here.
Sam Sharma.
Here.
Jessica Weaver.
Here.
Anastasia Yap.
Here.
Everyone's present.
Very good. And we are now going to move on to Agenda Item B, which is our public participation. You can join us via telephone, eight six zero six six five eight six five nine, or you can raise your hand here in the Google Meet. Could I ask, maybe it's Sam, could you mute your microphone there? Thank you very much. We do limit your public participation to three minutes. All I ask you to do is to state the street that you're on, not the number, the street and your name, please. So at this time, I'll wait and see if there's anyone for public participation. Okay, Nicole Cooney, please go ahead.
Okay, I think I have my mic on high. I live on Howard Street in Newington. My name is Nicole Cooney and I have two students in the Newington school system. So what I'd like to say is that I support, I'm calling about the dress code, and I support a more relaxed, less directive dress code. Because I believe that students should have leadership over their own bodies, which includes making the decision for themselves as to how they want to look and how they feel best and most comfortable. A dress code, it should not be punitive, dictated, controlled, or overly attended to. Students can be trusted to make these basic choices for themselves and should be afforded the opportunity to make mistakes and learn from them just like usual. So I want my kids to be allowed to look the way that she and he wish to look and express themselves, and it will build confidence, and I want them to have the space to learn about themselves in that process in a safe environment. Because when we give them space and command over themselves, we're giving them respect. So ultimately, the very best way to teach respectful behavior is to model it for them. So that is why I support changes to the dress code. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for participating. Is there anyone else? Richard De Silva?
Hi, good afternoon. I live on Connecticut Avenue here in Newington. I was speaking to another parent that made a comment on Facebook concerning the dress code, and they were informed by another resident here in Newington, not a board member, anyone on the Department of Education here in Newington, that the dress code verbiage was changed. And I'm just curious as to how a citizen of Newington was able to get access to information before it came out, and how I can do the same. Does any of the board members have any answers for that, as to how I can have access to information before it comes out?
That is something that we will work on and see what we can get for an answer for you.
Okay, and if local citizens are getting access to it, does that also mean that they're also part of the process for helping influence the current policies and procedures that are being made?
Okay, well typically, we don't respond to the questions and comments as they're being made, but I will say this, that it is not unusual for people of the public to give their input, but they don't necessarily take part in the policymaking themselves. We have a committee that does all of that work, and that committee brings it to the Board of Education. We discuss it, and then after we've had our discussion, two weeks later, then we vote on it. So that is the typical procedure that we use.
Okay, so me being involved would not violate anything, and I would like to know how I can get involved since other individuals that are not board members are involved in getting information ahead of time. So those are my main questions. I understand you're not going to respond individually to each, but that is my main question. And is it any sort of breach of ethics that people outside of the board is getting access to this information? So that is all that I have to ask and say. I would greatly appreciate a response or a comment to those questions.
Okay. We will certainly work on all of those. I will address very quickly, the only time that there would be a breach of ethics is if there is something that is being discussed that can only be discussed by the board and taken up in executive session, which actually what we're going to be doing in about an hour from now. If that kind of information is leaked and people of the public participate with that, that is a breach of ethics and that is illegal. For board members to share things that are going on with the public or the public to ask questions, that is not unethical for that to take place. If people make claims that they're making policy, I would question that because people of the public don't make policy, the board does. We do listen to the input of the public, we take it seriously, but we are the ones that eventually form the policy. Hopefully that answers some of the questions that you have.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Fletcher.
All right.
And fellow board members.
Okay. Now Nicole, your hand is still up, so if I could get you to take that down. Okay, and Melissa Tullisano, you're up next.
Hi, my name is Melissa Tullisano. I live on Eighth Street. I know I've expressed my concerns via email regarding the dress code change. However, I do have a few other concerns that I wanted to share. Recently, there was an article that was released that revealed teachers, administrators, substitute teachers were charged with alleged sex crimes in the first half of 2022. I believe this dress code sexualizes children, and is Newington really going down this road? Is independent of the person wearing the clothes or the viewer viewing the person wearing the clothes when sexualizing a person the way they're dressed? TV, video games, social media influencers, it's all sexualized, it's everywhere. But does it really have to be where our kids learn? Hormones are always going to play a role regardless of school or parental input. Many have argued that we should allow students to express their developing bodies wearing clothes that allow them to do so. My body developed early when I was in sixth grade, and I can tell you this, I dressed according to the dress code at the time, fully covered, and I still endured comments made to me by male students about my chest every single day. And many have stated that students aren't bothered by this, but what if they are? How is that going to be addressed? How is this dress code going to affect teachers and administrators teaching children dressed how they are allowed to be dressed? And I'm not talking about spaghetti straps or showing shoulders. I'm talking about midriffs or shorts that are only required to cover undergarments, but what if those undergarments are not typical underwear? What if they're thongs? It's too vague and it leaves the door open to anything, in my opinion. Concerning students that are allowed to identify and dress as an animal or furry, whatever you want to call it, if they are allowed to do so under the current dress code, what happens if my daughter decides to identify as Pete the Cat or Spider-Man or Elsa? Is she allowed to dress accordingly without her face being covered? Are teachers going to be next? Are they going to be allowed to dress how they feel comfortable to express their bodies? Where is the line going to be drawn? I'm required to dress appropriately business casual for work in the office I work in. I dress professionally and appropriately, not how I want to express necessarily my body, and I don't feel that suppresses my ability to express myself personally or socially. School's not a fashion show, it's a place of learning, and I think that we should spend more time concentrating on that than trying to accommodate everyone. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for sharing. Okay, and Jennifer Webster. Ms. Webster, your mic is muted.
There we go, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you for your time. I just want to express, I am absolutely for the new dress code. I have a daughter who just graduated Newington High. She's not your average, you know, size two young lady. So I try to really encourage her to be confident in herself within taste, and I think that comes from the parents. I don't think that going to school in a crop top that is appropriate is going to stop her learning. And if we, we need to stop allowing it to fall on the females. If the young men can't control themselves, the way a girl's dressed is not going to cause them to be distracted. And if it is, and that's an issue we need to discuss at home. When they go to college, they're going to be faced with all of these things, and we're putting them at a real disadvantage for when they go to college where they're not exposed to all sorts of people, all different cultures, all different, everything, the world is a big place. So I think we're doing them a disservice. Again, that's my feeling, and having a child that just graduated who is not your typical size, the fact that she feels comfortable wearing her shorty shorts and her, you know, her crop top, I'm very proud of her because that's setting her up to be confident going forward. And, you know, they're only kids for a short amount of time, let's let them, you know, express themselves, learn, get a good quality education. I really don't think that there is an issue with the way somebody's dressed versus how they learn. So thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. And next up is Leigh Anne Johnson.
Well, I'm Leigh Anne Johnson from Cinnamon Road. I voiced my opposition to the new dress code and was contacted by the chairperson of the Policy Committee from the Board of Ed. She made it perfectly clear the board did not want parental input, but you need some. I pointed out that this dress code removes any pretense of instilling in our students respect of any kind, respect for the educational process, and most notably, respect for themselves. Our minor students are just that, they're minor students. They do not possess the maturity and experience to ascertain the potential consequences of their choices. That's why the adults in their lives should be setting healthy and appropriate boundaries for them. That board member told me, and I quote, "Teachers can't enforce dress codes, it's too hard." In response to that appalling reason for throwing all expectation of decorum out the window, I suggested that teachers and administration try a bit harder to enforce appropriate policies instead of placing students at risk by allowing them to dress in a manner that sexualizes children. And that's what this does. Her reply was, and I quote, "Boys just need to learn to control themselves." I was assured that schools all over were adopting more lenient dress policies, so let's talk about self-control. From January 2022 to the end of June 2022, that's just the first six months of this year, there have been over 180 kindergarten through 12th grade, public school educators arrested for child sex-related crimes. These crimes range from possession and distribution of child pornography to raping students. Now let me stress that that number is only what received press. If you count another arrest nationwide that didn't receive press, that number more than doubles. But let's focus on the stories that did receive press. Out of 181 arrests that received press, four were school principals, 153 were teachers, the remaining 24 were split between teachers aides and substitute teachers. Did someone forget to tell those adult educators to just control themselves and not rape students? It's, I'm sure it was a simple oversight like that. Of those publicized crimes against students, 77% of them were committed against current students directly. And it may interest the board member who threw the Newington Suns under the bus, that of the 181 adult educators who have been arrested for child sex crimes, over 20% of those arrested were women. Does the board think that this irresponsible new dress policy will result in a safer school environment? This board member accused me of asking the school to parent my children because I want some standard in place that ensures appropriate learning environments and prevents sexualization of our children. Far from asking the school to step in and do my job for me, this board is in effect saying to Newington parents, "Don't bother making rules for your child, they don't have to follow them here. If you don't have standards in place, kids have free rein. You are interfering with parenting and you do not have that right. Self-expression is a cop-out. Indecency is not empowerment, education is. Put an appropriate standard of dress in place at these schools. Until you do, you are derelict in your duties, and anyone who voted for this has no business making policy regarding our children." Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that wishes to make comment? All right, seeing no more hands, there are no calls. We are now going to move on to Agenda Item C, and in our new business, we are going to first of all have an update on the school schedule change. Dr. Brahman, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Let me put something up for the board to look at. As many board members may be aware, a state law was passed unexpectedly during this legislative session that mandates that teachers receive a 30-minute lunch break, uninterrupted lunch break. In other words, it can't be partial into two parts, it has to be 30 minutes straight, uninterrupted. Currently, per our teacher's contract, our teachers are afforded a 25-minute lunch break. This trumps any contractual agreements, so we are now required to make sure our schedule allows for this. So we wanted to look at this through the lens, and within the item presented on your screen is the Public Act that does afford this opportunity for teachers. So we looked at it with our principals, we've had numerous discussions, this all came out very much at the end of the school year, but regardless, we did speak to our teachers' union, and the end product, the suggested end product is that for high school, we add another seven minutes to the end of the school day, which would put the end time at 2:27. Currently, it's 2:20. Middle schools and elementary schools are requesting that we add five minutes. The differential has to do with the amount of time in the middle of the day where the lunch waves are scheduled and how that has to be logistically accomplished. For PL and early release days, all three schools just want additional five minutes at the end of the day. We've run this by the bus garage, we've run it by the teachers' union, we anticipate signing an MOU before the end of the summer, but I wanted to make sure the board understood it and had, and hear any concerns they might have. Why are we doing this? Because if we don't make some modifications, the cumulative effect of this additional lunchtime would be quite a bit of instruction time lost. This won't fix all of that, but it will, you know, minimize the impact. So Wendy and others have helped principals look at their schedules, and this is what we would like to recommend. So the motion does speak to these issues. So now I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Fletcher, for any board questions or concerns.
Okay. Are there any questions for clarification? All right, I don't see any hands raised for clarification, so at this time, I will entertain the motion as it's written.
I can do it.
Okay, please go ahead.
Move the Newington Board of Education approve the changes to the school hours as follows. For a full-length school day, high school ends at 2:27 PM. Middle schools end at 2:55 PM. Elementary schools end at 3:30 PM. For PL and early release days, high school ends at 12:25 PM. Middle school ends at 1:05 PM. And elementary schools end at 1:40 PM.
All right, we have a motion before us. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now we'll open it up for any discussion that the board may have. All right, Ms. Parati?
Yep, just want to say this makes sense, and assuming the experts weighed in, you know, buses can get from dropping off high school students to picking up middle schoolers with two less minutes, then definitely all for giving teachers the 30 minutes that they deserve.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Johnson, if you don't mind, would you put your hand down, please, so I can have a clear slate here? I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, any other board comments? All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Drozd.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Manke Hut Wagner.
Yes.
Richard Laverrier. Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yap.
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
All right, very good, thank you very much, everybody. We are now going to move on to Agenda Item C2, which is an update on the end-of-year budget and summer projects. Mr. Jacobowitz, is he with us?
Yes, I am.
There you are, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. The projects we had lined up for production this summer are all going very well. Individually, we have not had any one major hiccup on any of them to interfere with potential schedule for the start of school, or, you know, put us into a position of where we don't have access to the materials or other things where we have an unfinished condition at the start of the school year, the largest of which is the John Patterson parking lot. Everything is going well there. It is intended that all the site prep is finished by this Friday, so that Tilcon would be able to come in anytime, starting Monday, August 1st, to be able to do paving, you know. Their schedule is always a little bit in flux based on weather conditions, and it's not necessarily at this job site, but it would be, could be things that occur this week which would push back work scheduled for next week a few days. But we're, look like we're in, you know, a very good position to have everything done, plenty of time to stripe the lot, get all our signage in place, and make sure all the key elements of the project are complete. Over at John Wallace, we've been working on the security film for the classroom wings. As everyone's aware, the wings three, four, and six were set up with classrooms back-to-back going down the center of the corridors, with walkways along the exterior walls where the windows are. And there are no hard wall conditions present. You know, there is, you know, some soft materials to help divide the space a little bit, but there is no full wall or physical protection of a regular security door like all regular classrooms have. So part one of this work is to get all those windows screened properly so that there is the capability of slowing down any intruder that may happen to occur. Part two of this project is what to do with the actual room conditions. You know, each classroom at its largest within wings three, four, and six is 625 square feet, and to compare that to a typical classroom, which is 850 to 900 square feet, it's two-thirds of the size of a regular classroom, and it doesn't have the full wall facing the corridor. So there is a bit more of an openness to it because you don't have that wall built. So what we're going to be doing, starting in the next week or so, is we're going to do one prototype of actually walling in a classroom at that 625-square-foot condition, and then the principal, Mr. Dias, is going to go through and cycle different staff members through that classroom over the first few months of the school year, so everybody can have a real sense of what it would be like to teach in a closed space that small, and if it's even viable at that point, you know. If it's determined not viable, you know, that wall system will just be taken down and we revert it back to what it is. If it's something that is what the school administration and the board want to pursue as a safety measure, once we get through the whole evaluation process, we will then make any fine-tuning changes to the set of specs for it, and then start progressing and building those out, probably starting sometime after January, after Christmas time. And it all depends based on what's the most practical approach to doing it. You know, we may not be able to really get it done and take classrooms out of service while school's in operation, so I don't really have a timetable for that yet, other than if the project ends up being a go with the teachers and the staff over at John Wallace, that would be an item that would be targeted for full completion no later than next summer. So by September, start of school, end of August 2023, all the classrooms would have that secondary level of protection built into them. I saw somebody had a hand up. Dr. Fletcher, do you want me to answer the questions as we go through the different projects? Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, Ms. Yop.
Yes, I can wait until the end.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, very good. Okay, over at John Patterson, Ruth Chafee, those are the two schools that we're going to be doing the improvements to the security vestibule. Those are long lead time items. The most current update we have is we're going to get those materials sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So it's a full 26-week lead time that we had on it. So, you know, the target timeframe to finish those projects is going to be over Christmas break, you know, when kids are not in the buildings, you know, we would need to take down the system, we need to open up the walls to be able to do that and get those installed. So it's not a project we can do while school's in session. You know, if we only have the ability to get one done at Christmas, that'll be step one, and then we will try for either the February break or April break next year to finish it. And that's still predicated on everything showing up on time for us. You know, that's the larger issue here is time, it's not a matter of capability, everything else is lined up, you know exactly what we're going to be doing. All the subcontractors for electrical, security, fire alarm systems are all set up, it's just waiting for the materials for the storefront doors and with the safety glass that goes in it, that will be the holdup at this point, and there's nothing we can do about it at this point. Okay. Next item is the high school roof project, and great to report that it looks like that job will be finished by the end of the first week of August, based on what we know for schedule now. You know, certainly there could be a few days slippage if there's bad weather conditions experienced while they're trying to do that. But that would get every roof section of the building to new or pretty close to new status, you know, this summer. The only areas left to be done were roof sections in the rear of the building for the new science labs that were vintage 1999, and anything newer than that point. So we'll have really excellent conditions for the roof, you know, by the end of the summer. We don't anticipate any material problems. Contract has been going along without any difficulties or significant issues they have, they found as they've been doing the work. So that's going very well. Other things we are, you know, have been doing around the district routinely are the, you know, some asbestos abatement work in the various tools, and we've done work this year at John Wallace, Martin Kellogg in the high school, and, you know, these are things we progress through to both remove the environmental hazard as well as when it fits in with improvements that we're doing in the building. At this time, I'll toss to Dr. Brahman for a minute, she can give everybody an update on the Anna Reynolds project, I wasn't in town this week to attend the meeting.
Thank you very much, Lou. I actually walked through the building last week, and I was extraordinarily impressed with the progress. Talked to construction manager and program manager, and everyone was very positive. The abatement is largely complete, the temporary classroom spaces are well underway to be ready. We've been assured that teachers are going to have access to their classrooms by August 17th. Spoke to Craig Holland today, the technology will be in place. I showed the board through my update some of the playground areas that children will still have access to. And I talked to Jason, you know, I said to him, if there's too much of a limit as to what they can do, we can get some additional toys that kids can use outside. But I do think they're gonna have some adequate playground area. So all in all, the project's going along well. There's been no surprises. One delay on the elevator equipment. They've dug the trench, but some of the components are not there yet. But that won't throw too much of a wrinkle into things. So overall, a very positive report. So that's, does that complete our update, Lou, in terms of the summer projects?
The only other one I got an update on today was on the elevator project at the high school that they're ready to start on August 8th. And I would expect that they would be able to finish that requirement before school starts. So all the major issues are being addressed, and we're in good shape at this point.
Oops, you're muted, Bruce. Dr. Fletcher.
I knew it. Okay.
Dr. Fletcher, may I please just address Dr. Brahmit and Lou about the Anna Reynolds?
Yes, please.
I just wanna say thank you. It's been such, and I'm gonna guess Amy would agree with me on this. Just dealing with like how Steve Woods is running the committee, it's informative. Castle Blues is doing a great job of just keeping us informed on the committee, so I just really appreciate it. So I just wanna do, like, let the public know that the people who are doing it are doing a nice job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members with questions or comments?
Did Anastasia have a question, Dr. Fletcher, that we deferred?
She's back now. Ms. Yop, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question for Lou, if that's okay, Dr. Fletcher.
Go ahead, please.
So we're just kind of, we're talking about John Wallace, and I remember during, I think, facilities meeting you had, you talked about the security wings. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Possibly not completed during Christmas tree? Okay. And is that a project that we'll be able to approve, or is that gonna, you know, exceed whatever our limit is? Do you know?
The, the building of the wall to just close in the existing classroom will not exceed our capabilities of doing it. We may not choose to do it all at once. We may wanna do one wing at a time. Yes, all this will kind of play out once we get feedback from the principal and the staff as to how successful they think that would be if we do it. You know, our alternate plan for the wings that we tried to get started six, seven years ago had it where every wing would basically just be cleaned out, back to the bare walls. A center hallway would be put down each wing, which would be a traditional block wall or brick with a true door to close it off. And the windows, the exterior windows of the wing were, would be the windows of the classroom. So that would add and bring up the square footage of a classroom from 625 square feet to around 800. We would end up having enough rooms in every wing for the existing students, as well as at least one breakout space in each wing to handle small group intervention activities, tutorial activities, where it would be preferred to pull a student out or a group of students out of their regular class instead of trying to do it all in class all the time. So that's still on the table. That's obviously Plan B. That's much more expensive. You know, based on today's cost numbers, we would be looking at $3 million a wing or so to do that. And it only will go up, I believe, unless we have a major reversal of inflationary trends right now. Based on our preliminary, our sample room, and only one room we're doing, is gonna end up being 15,000 to 20,000 dollars to fully outfit and make the adjustments we want. And we'll have 30 of those rooms to do around the district. So, you know, if we extrapolate the whole thing, that's $600,000 or so. That's really, could be a possibility going ahead into the design of this year's BOE CIP account, that there's money set aside for that. And it would be, you know, based on, you know, how we choose to bid out or utilize certain contracting arrangements that we have access to right now. So all that's really the secondary part, once we get through the, is this really the right thing to do for the building?
Okay, thank you. So essentially, if we do piece by piece, as opposed to all of it at once, then we could get it done? Is that what you're saying? Like, if we do a few rooms and then a couple more rooms, like each year, or a section each year? Because if the whole project will cost around, let's say, what, 3, 9 million? Then that would have to go to like a referendum or something. But if we do a small section in our school CIP, and then maybe another section another year, then we could actually get it done.
Right, we can, there are a variety of ways we can attack that work. Because each room would basically be modular and all, so it's like small projects individually that we just put together.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Richard Laverrier?
Good, good evening. I'd like to ask a question of Dr., or excuse me, of Mr. Jacobowitz. Mr. Jacobowitz, when you, you said, you said that you were gonna have like a one-test room to make sure that it works logistically, is that right?
Correct.
Can I go, can I go with you when you're done with it?
Oh, sure. There's, the principal, Mr. Diaz, is proposing, he's probably gonna have 10 or 12 different staff members occupy the room for at least a full week at a time to get a feel for it, to see how workable it is from a teaching and space standpoint. So he's gonna take a couple teachers at each grade levels to basically be his team of evaluators for this, where they'd be able to identify, you know, if it works, if it doesn't work, what kind of deficiencies we now create in a different sense, just to get the improvement of security. So, you know, we're viewing this one room as essentially it's a necessary throwaway. If it's not viable, we'll just take it right down, and in a couple days, the room would be back to what it was before. But if it is something that's suitable, we then start deciding if we want to go about the implementation plan and also see how to fund it.
All right, well, thanks. I'd look forward to, I look forward to taking a look at it when it's, when that room's set up. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, I'd be happy to arrange a board tour, and I will say that both this, this project and the screening of all the windows was directly a result of teachers voicing concerns, especially after recent events in Texas. So a group of us went to the middle school, did some analysis, and this is where we headed with it. But yes, we'll be happy to show the prototype to board members if it looks like it's going to be a successful solution. And then we did put in the board packet, shifting gears now to the end of the year use of the non-lapsing fund. I did wanna share with the board that we were really able to, again, with some lucky breakage with grant money and such, we only had to utilize $438,000 of the non-lapsing dollars. So that's reflected in the memo. There's no action for the board to take. I think the board was aware that we could, we had projected quite a bit more than that. But with, with just some lucky breaks and some good breakage and some grant money that came in, largely from open choice that had to be spent, we were able to really reduce our reliance on the non-lapsing fund. So a fairly good end to the school year in light of that 0% budget. So thanks to Lou and his department for really getting, getting the budget to, and on a, I won't call it a positive note, because we were in the hole 40, 438,000, but it could have been a lot worse. And with that, Dr. Fletcher, I'll turn it back to you. That would conclude Business C2.
Okay, excellent. So I don't see any more hands. So we're gonna now move on to Agenda Item C3. And this is a proposed addendum to dress code regulation 5132. So this will be a time of discussion and possible action. Now, I wanna make, make it clear so everybody understands, we are not opening up the entire policy. We are only looking at policy 5132 and relative to the proposed addendum. So any discussion outside of that for any other part of the dress code is not going to be appropriate, and I will not be able to allow it. So we have to keep our focus on 5132. And I thank you all right now for your attention. Okay, so now we are at that. So Item C3, we're gonna discuss and take possible action on the proposed addendum to dress code regulation 5132. And I believe you're bringing that up there.
I am, Dr. Fletcher, and Steve's prepared to give a brief background if you would like him to.
Yes, I was just gonna ask who was going to do it.
I've asked Steve Freese to prepare there, and I think it will help, in light of some of our public comment, for the, both the board to be reminded and any public still on the meeting to be reminded of how we go about policy changes. So, Mr. Freese, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brahmit and Dr. Fletcher. I just wanted to share and point out that, you know, the Policy Committee is comprised of, of membership of the board. And we do have sometimes ad hoc members of the districts. For example, joining us most of the committee meetings were Christine, Kristen Freeman, our Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction. And she's supported us, especially in the development of this policy and a few others that relate to curriculum. And she was able to meet with students and some faculty at the high school around this policy. I think what's most important, and I just put in the chat, is we do have a website, a Policy Committee website, right off of our district website, for which you can go and review any of the information from our meetings and meeting minutes. Generally, the next day they're posted from our meeting that evening. So we do hold subcommittee meetings, and then the next day, we do post the minutes to those meetings. And I think what was referenced thoroughly are sometimes some of the links and references from those meetings are posted online, and the public does have access to that information. So we do try to keep a transparent, you know, process. These are the members that are being displayed right now of the Board of Education Policy Committee. And then if you go and you look under the tabs up top, the meeting agendas and minutes, if you click on that tab, Dr. Brahmit, you're going to see immediately what shows up. And what does show up and appear is that we began our meetings on, on March 16th around numerous policies. Unfortunately, we weren't able at that meeting to discuss the dress code policy because we had a high volume of other items that needed our attention as well. And then in April, on April 20th, we began the deliberations around the dress code policy. We continued that me, into May 8th meeting, 18th meeting. And then finally, it was brought to the Board of Education. In between those meetings, we reviewed and researched a lot of information and really came prepared for each meeting, ready to have strong deliberations around that. We were also getting some student feedback and information from students and studying the data, which represented a lot of information that we had to take into consideration. So one of our primary goals when we developed this policy was definitely to address any issues of inequity that may have existed or maintained within the, the current or previous policy. And also make sure that we were addressing any Title IX issues, specifically around like gender identity and expression. So we had to be certain that, that we focused on those. We know that through the data and through some of the other information that we had gathered, we had to really think about marginalization specific to gender and race. As what we saw in the data was that more girls, and specifically girls of color, were consistently being disciplined for violating the dress code. So we wanted to try to put parameters in around that. Concerns around efforts of body image and body shaming was what came up often from some of the student voices that were heard. And we needed to ensure that we were inclusionary for improvements to the policy in regards to pronouns and gender identity and, and those types of areas. So after a lot of deliberation, we came up with the policy that's before you today. And I know that there is a recommended motion for a, you know, potential change to that. But I just wanted to kind of give that background, that history of, of some of the process that we engaged in. And want to thank the, the board members who, who engaged in that work for their fine efforts.
Thank you, Steve, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher for any further discussion.
Okay, Danielle Droz, go ahead.
Hello, so I thought I'd address a couple of things. So it's interesting that, you know, one of the people of the public said that I did not listen to parents. And so there was a demand to change this immediately, and I was like, I can't do that. That's not how it works. So after talking to that parent, talking to another parent, talking to another parent who were like, you were short-sighted, you were short-sighted, you were short-sighted, and I said, okay, let me go back and see if we can make amendment, addendum, whatever we wanna call it, about the midriff, because that seemed to be the biggest bone of contention with the constituents that I had spoken to. So that's where this came up. I reached out to Dr. Brahmit and Steve Freese and said, and I'm sorry, that's a lie, Steve Freese and Dr. Fletcher and said, like, how do I, like, do this? I don't know how to do it. Like, how do I bring this up again after it's been approved? So that's where this came from. The motion, the addendum, is just, some of the people had shared with me, like, the way it was written, if we look at the verbiage, girls could, or I shouldn't say that, it could be boys too, or they's, people could wear very, very short, like, crop tops. And I said, that was short-sighted, and it was, I just find it ironic that, you know, obviously, I listened to the parents because it didn't come to my force. I wouldn't have thought like that. So in listening, after it had been approved, it got more motion, people heard more about it. There was some misinformation about litter boxes in the bathroom, and there's just a lot of misinformation. And so that's where I came up with, you know, I had said, let's see if we can do this to make some, some, trying to think what the word would be, some common ground where we are still staying true to what the committee had talked about. But of course, we want to make sure that people are dressing not too skimped. I don't know what the word is, but Jess, maybe you can help me with that. So, so that's, I just wanna kind of say that that's where this kind of, after everything that Mr. Freese said, that's how this kind of became where it is now.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Laverrier?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Where's, just to make sure that we're, we're, we're talking about specifically the addendum about the, the number of fingers related to a midriff, right?
That is correct.
Yeah. I mean, my issue, though, is like, and, and I'm, and I'm gonna ask this of the, of, of you, Dr. Fletcher, is maybe that we can table this to think about it and not necessarily rush into an action? Because I was presented with this paperwork just before, you know, recently, what, a couple days ago? And, I mean, I voted no on this policy, all right? And I feel like the addendum is asking maybe like, okay, you disagreed with it, but this might make it a little bit better. Well, maybe we could work on it a little bit better. You know, what is this, four fingers? Who's fingers? People have different lengths of fingers, you know? How are you measuring that? That's, sounds scandalous, frankly. And I think that maybe we can come up with a better formula. I don't think that we should maybe even necessarily rush into a fix. I know that the public is energized by it, but I think that maybe we could all work together to come to a solution that's gonna work for everybody. Yeah, that's what I got. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anastasia Yop?
Hi, I just wanted to address Steve Freese, if that was okay? You had mentioned something about girls of color having this issue. What is the percentage of women of color, like, students of color that are female that you have in Newington School system? Because the statistics I looked at doesn't look like it's that many. So I just wanna know what, what percentage of girls of color we have in Newington schools?
Certainly, thank you so much. When we, when we do our data disregregation, all students who are not white end up being students of color. And so when we look at that, there is a high percentage of students. In some schools, we're over 50%, and some schools were close, and some schools were not. So it does vary from school to school, and throughout the district. We are nearing, you know, close to 50% range. But I don't have the exact number on me right now of the ones in violation of dress code, but that continuously, year after year, comes up to be a concern.
So we group all children that are not white as students of color? Is that, is that what we're saying? I just wanna clarify.
That is correct.
So is this just a Newington thing? I mean, So, is this just a Newington thing? I mean, I work mortgages, so we have different categories, and I didn't know that that was something that was done.
Right.
Or if you're not white, that doesn't mean you're a student of color. There, my grandmother's Native American. I mean, you know, she's Massentucket Pequot. So, she wouldn't be categorized in that. So, my concern is if you're taking students and just saying, if you're not white, you're a student of color, that's concerning to me, having a very diverse background. So, that's, that's something that was concerning. Thank you.
And if I could just respond, I do appreciate that, Miss Yop. And I would just tell you, we were guided by the State Department of Education to look at it that way. So, that is where we gained our guidance. But we also do have subcategories within races. So, it isn't that we don't look at that either. So, we have, we have those. And then when we go to do the comparison, we have both white and students of color. So, we do both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Weaver?
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I just was hoping, is it okay if I just add a little more color to what Danielle and Mr. Freese said, just about the process, and then we'll get straight to it. So, I served on this committee with Ms. Hutt Wagner, Ms. Dros, and obviously, it's a hot topic, I guess. And for the process that, that took place, one, all of our meetings are posted beforehand. They have to be posted by, by our statutes or by our rules that they have to be posted before. So, all of them do get public notice, all the board members on our board, as well as it's open to the public. So, we always encourage public participation. We don't usually get a lot, mostly because, you know, some of the policies we're looking at maybe don't garner that kind of attention. But this has been on our agenda for, for a long time in terms of what we're looking at for our policy. Can someone mute? Sorry. So, in terms of why we're looking at this policy as well, a majority of the policies that we have in place are from 2000, so two decades old. We thought this was a good time to have a refresher. And a lot of this policy was informed not only by our personal views, but by peer, peer district, in terms of the information that they use, the policies that they used. Some of our Policy Committee members, our teachers in other districts like West Hartford, who had more of similar dress codes that we were trying to change to. And we asked, you know, do you have any issues with these? Are you seeing anything that you would consider distracting? Are you considering anything that was disproportionately impacting one gender or the other, or any gender that a student identifies by? And so, we asked, you know, when those changes took place, how those changes affected learning, and we found that there wasn't a lot of issues. So, that was really the foundation we based it on. We then took student and teacher input. Parents were welcome to. We are always feeding, or, you know, fielding any questions. I personally did not get one email until this weekend. Wasn't addressed to me, but I didn't get any emails about this. Obviously, you know, I'm from a younger generation, so I'm not on Facebook all the time. We tend to be on Instagram. I'm not really on social media, but from what I could tell, I did pop back on Facebook. There seemed to be a largely resounding support for this with, you know, ample criticism as well. But so, we were trying to, you know, make sure that we fielded all the questions beforehand during this process. You know, we try and be as informative as we can. You know, whether people know about this or not, it's, it's, it's a struggle constantly, whether it's our committee meetings or our regular board meetings. So, that was just the process we took. And then from there, Ms. Dros contacted the Policy Committee members, noting that she was fielding some concerns about the midriff issue. And we actually discussed this in our Policy Committee at one point, and we asked, you know, do we address it, do we not? Particularly because the wording of midriff, does it, you know, denote using girls over boys? And we really tried to make this as gender neutral as possible, as body size neutral as possible, because I think it's important that, you know, we try and be equitable about how we, how we view students. We don't want this disproportionately impacting young girls again, which I've experienced at Newington. Other students have. I know that we've seen it. And it's been a really, you know, hard time for some students to have to deal with that. In terms of the actual addendum that was there, Ms. Dros and Ms. Hutt Wagner, we all kind of talked about it. I didn't like the four fingers. She knows this beforehand when we were talking about it, because I thought it would bring more confusion. And quite frankly, the three finger, like spaghetti lasagna noodle shrapnel was already trying a little bit cumbersome enough. And I think it fall, you know, who does it fall on to be the one to enforce slash say, you know, I think this is three or four fingers if it's your own fingers? And then looking again at body size differences, and if we're going to be body inclusive, that's just very difficult. So, you know, I think we were all open to more suggestions. Again, this was something we talked about for several hours. Our last meeting literally went till nine o'clock from five o'clock start. So, this wasn't exactly like, you know, an overnight thing. This was something that we really put our hearts into. And, I mean, we got some very, you know, these are very sensitive topics that we're talking about with, you know, high school girls who wanted their input on this, with teachers who wanted their input on this, and parents who wanted their input on this. So, I just want to make it very clear that, you know, everything was done in as transparent a way as possible. Board members got this policy weeks in advance before our meeting, that we were then discussing it, and then two weeks before we voted on it. So, we try to be as transparent as possible. We do everything that we are required to do to, to show when and where we decided on these actions. But in terms of, you know, input and stuff like that, we're always open to getting emails. I just personally haven't gotten anything. So, it's very difficult for me to know that there's all this criticism when we're not getting it. And again, I, I would just, you know, I would ask also the public, it's much better to email us rather than post on Facebook, because we're not on Facebook 24/7. I think it breeds a lot of toxicity and misunderstandings and misinformation. And I think it's really important that to have these accurate conversations. We should be able to talk about these, because, you know, you could say, oh, I saw this. It was four inches or four, whatever. And sometimes that just gets confused. So, in terms of the process, that's how that came about. And, you know, we hoped it would be transparent and there wasn't misinformation, but unfortunately that happened. In terms of my personal view, I actually agree with Mr. Laverrier. Shocking! Oh, my gosh. But I think, you know, I'm of the view that a lot of what we should be looking at is, I think we should give our students and our parents the benefit of the doubts. There's been a lot of talk about how parents know best about what's, when it comes to their children, particularly in this last, you know, political zeitgeist we're in. So, to me, I thought this would be, you know, what, you know, what would follow is that kind of logic? And so, for, for me, I'm, I'm thinking about it as giving our students and our parents the benefit of the doubt. I think they know what is appropriate for school. I don't think it needs to be, you know, spelled out, but if it needs to be, I'm happy to come back. I would rather just see it as a reaction rather than condemning the potential. It seems like there's a lot of extremist rhetoric going on around, like, what could be, and all these things. And I've just never seen it. I've talked to students, and I said, what's the biggest issue? You know, like, who's getting dress coded and what's happening? And one is, you know, girls for shorts sometimes, but the biggest one is hats and hoodies. That's like the number one thing. So, you can take the anecdote for what it is, but that was about 14 students that said the same thing. So, for me, I'm more worried about hats and hoodies come, you know, the fall. But to each their own, I just wanted to put out my opinion and really express my gratitude to Ms. Dros and Ms. Hutt Wagner for putting us through this process, really doing our due diligence about this, looking at all of what we do with other policies, peer districts, our DIRG, wherever we can find our own, you know, staff and students in our community. I think that's really important on this process. But in terms of this addendum, I'm not going to be able to support doing that. I think it just makes it a little more confusing, and I'd rather have the policy implemented, see how it comes. And I would love, love, love to schedule another meeting in the fall. And if we're wrong, we're wrong, and I will go down on the record saying that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Beth Hutt Wagner, please.
Thank you. I'm going to have, I don't want to go on and on. So, I do want to say a lot of ditto to what Ms. Weaver said. I think she hit a lot of the, a lot of similar points that I was going to make. But I also really want to just take a minute to commend Ms. Dros for, for speaking to so many people in the public, whether it be students and teachers and parents, and, and from my point of view, listening and hearing what they had to say, whether she agreed or didn't agree, taking it all in and kind of coming up with, hey, maybe we were off the mark, as Ms. Weaver said, that this, this might be a solution, and just really trying to be forward thinking. And I think our job as the board is to listen to all stakeholders. And so, I just want to commend her for, for trying to do this. I also wanted to just make sure it was really clear that when, when this whole looking at our dress code kind of came about, there was a committee before it even came, a pre-committee, I guess you could call it, that I believe in, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Freese, but included some students and teachers at Newington High School. Is that correct? Okay. And then I also, in talking to some parents and other students this week, I was made aware that there were several students at the middle school who clearly are future leaders and kind of went to their administrators and brought up some concerns, really, you know, talking about body inclusivity. So, you know, like what, what was working on one student and wouldn't get them dress coded would on another. Which brings me to, while I do really appreciate this move to kind of make this better, for lack of a better word, I, I do, similar to Ms. Weaver and Mr. Laverrier, question the four fingers, only because I think that brings us back to, you know, what might be a shirt on one person that looks fine, might be considered different on another, and kind of how we measuring the four fingers. And I don't want to put any adult in a awkward position to do the measuring. So, I'm not, I'm sorry, I usually have like a solution or something backed up when I, when I say these things. So, I'm not really sure what the solution is. I did pull up West Hartford and Weathersfield's kind of dress codes, just to look at. And so, interestingly, West Hartford, which I believe is a member of our DIRG, is that correct? I hope I'm right. I don't know.
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. I believe that theirs does, I think theirs just says like, no midriff at all. So, again, I'm not really sure, but just interesting to look at. And those of us who are on this committee, we did take time to look at all of the surrounding towns and like, come together and what's happening, what are we doing? So, again, I'd also be willing to this fall, if we need to go back and look at it, if we, we didn't do this right, and we need to look at things a little differently, we can. But I also really want to respect the work that we have done, because I think we are moving in the right direction. And I'm also really proud of the fact that we took so much of the female component out of the dress code and constantly hitting females for their attire. So, I'm glad that we, we took that out. And I am rambling.
All right. Thank you very much. We got two more board members that want to chime in, and then we're going to move forward here. Richard Laverrier?
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. And, you know, I want to take a sec. I do want to thank the subcommittee members. I have, I have no doubts at all about their intentions. I'm sure that, you know, I assume best intentions. I do think that there, unfortunately, I do think that there are other flaws, and I think that maybe, I just want to echo my sentiment from when I chimed in earlier, that maybe we could table this vote. I don't necessarily think we should rush into a vote to try to fix something, because people of the public have chimed in and told us. We should make sure that we get it done right, okay? And, I mean, not for nothing, I ask you for a little bit of leeway here, Dr. Fletcher, but I think that the, I think that the term hate speech, as it's used in our dress code, is if it was to hypothetically, theoretically, get a legal challenge, that's vague and ambiguous. I think that maybe we could take some time. We, we, we have some time before the school year starts, okay? We can take some time. We can address issues that have come up, and we can get it done right, all right? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Branda?
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Apologies if my video goes out. I keep getting a thing from Google that says my internet's not stable. So, hopefully I don't freeze in an awkward spot. Well, just really quick on, on the previous comments, I feel like the committee did its due diligence, and I feel like that a vast majority, I believe it was seven to one, voted in favor of the policy. So, my understanding of Robert's rules would be that only those who voted in favor could actually change the policy to Mr. Laverrier's point. But I, I also, I was thinking as some comments were going, we never actually made the motion, but I understand we're talking about it kind of in, in a vague sense. But to Ms. Weaver's point, you know, I just, I think we need to figure out how it works. I think the, as I said before, the committee did a lot of hard work.
I thought you had the 12.5.
Mr. Sharma, can you mute your mic, please?
All good. So, I was just saying, the committee did its due diligence.
The one in Newington, if they have it, then I can pick it up from Newington. Can you just give us this one?
Mr. Sharma?
I took care of Mr. Sharma by muting.
Wake up, Sam.
All good.
I'm right here. Sorry.
You're good.
Hey, just, just a quick comment. I think, I mean, we had, we had a committee that worked on.
Hold on. Sam, Michael Branda has the floor.
I'm sorry.
Can you wait? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Branda.
All good. All good. So, I forget what I was saying. Oh, yeah, I just think that we need to see how this plays out. I think that we need to see how, you know, how it actually goes into effect, how parents react, how students react, because I do think that there's a lot of assuming going on, just in terms of, you know, just kind of possibly over-exaggerating the potential of what could happen, you know, circling back to our administrators and talking to them, finding out what their challenges were, if they even had challenges, and trying to enforce this. And I just, you know, I went back and listened to one of the meetings where we talked about this, and, and Ms. Dros said that kids are going to push it no matter what we put out there. And I think that that's a fair statement. And I, you know, it made me think about Mr. Freese, how you mentioned kind of that once the policy is, is created, that the administration is then, I guess, in essence, you know, in charge of, of regulating it. So, I just wanted to put this out there. And Mr. Freese or Dr. Brummett, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is just my understanding. But the way I understand the policy in itself is that we create the policy, and then the administration kind of dictates how it's regulated. So, you know, we're kind of, we're saying in a general sense, here are the guidelines, and the administration will then define, you know, how they, how they implement it, how they, like I said, regulate it, and how students and everybody can comply with it. And then if, you know, each school, like if this, the high school says, this is how we're doing the dress code within the guidelines, if it doesn't fit within our policy, then we could say, okay, we need to change things up. But it's up to each school and each administrator to kind of take the framework and go from there. But I understand we did not have a motion on the table, but as it relates to the potential motion, I'm not in favor of it, because I think the committee did an excellent job. They did their due diligence. They worked hard, and I think it's time that we see how it works first. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I want to just do a quick summary here. I just want to remind everybody, we are not amending the policy. All we are seeking to possibly do is add an addendum for clarification. And the consensus of what I'm hearing right now is that we're not ready to take action on this. So, if somebody would be, wants to make a motion that we table this until September, I would entertain that.
Motion to table?
Not till September.
All right. We have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to table and a second before us. Do we have any questions? Mr. Sharma, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quick that, you know, we, we had, we had a committee that worked on the, on the policy, on the dress code, and then it was passed. Also, like the, the new rule, the four finger, I'm not, you know, I'm not in support of that. I think, I mean, we should just implement the dress code and see, you know, see what happens. And if there is, and, you know, if some's, some's got to be fixed, we just, you know, do it again or something. I think that's the best way to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Beth Hutt Wagner?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I guess, kind of inquire with everyone as we're, the motion, which, you know, obviously I just seconded, but do we need to put, I don't know if we need to put like a time stipulation on that, or... to put like a time stipulation on that, or do we not need to? I mean, I'm just kind of like trying to gauge, like, is this something that we need to discuss before the school year starts? Or is this something that we're feeling that let the school, let the school year start, see how it's going, check in October, how can we fix it? I guess I, I think, I, I'm wondering if that needs to be a part of the motion or just, or can the motion be so broad as, I, I don't know.
I agree, Dr. Fletcher. We should, we gotta, we gotta get that, sorry, I'm speaking out of turn. We gotta get that before the school year.
Okay. Well, let me just make a clarification here. We do not have another official board meeting until September. That would require us to call another special meeting and it would be related just to that.
Fine by me.
Dr. Fletcher, sorry, I just wanted to clarify if Mr. Friesy could, we originally, the reason why Ms. Droes put this on the, adds an addendum on this special meeting is because we have to put these in the student handbooks. And I believe those go out to print within, I'm not sure when they go out to print, but they will be going out to print very soon, like within the week or two. And in terms of how I feel, I think we can table it till September. Like I said, as Mr. Branda said, I wanted to see how this policy went into place and if we're wrong and we need to amend it, we absolutely will. And that will go straight into, you know, we can have that first, first day of October and we can say, you know what, this, this is, you know, every, this is egregious, everyone's violating this policy and blah, blah, blah. We think there's so many distractions, X, Y, and Z. You know, I, I would like to see it play out as is. So I would be fine with tabling it until it's September. And I think in terms of the feasibility of doing this, I'm not sure when we would have to, we would have to scrounge together something incredibly fast. And I think that's the antithesis to what this policymaking process is, is we don't do these things overnight and we don't do these things, you know, willy-nilly and super fast because we want to be able to have this due diligence. But it needs to go into the handbooks, I believe, relatively soon if Dr. Brummett or Mr. Friesy can comment on that. I'm not sure.
Okay. The committee chair, Danielle Droes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. So I, when I was speaking to one of the parents who had concerns, my recommendation was not well received. However, let's wait until, let's try it, let's see if, you know, like Ms. Weaver said, if we're wrong, we'll say we're wrong. But my suggestion, which was not well received also, was we could throw out a, a survey. And I know that surveys are not always great, but we can throw out a survey to the students, the staff, the, the, the parents and say, how's it going? And then we can revisit it once we get feedback from all of the parties involved. Again, I agree with Ms. Weaver and I appreciate all the feedback on my proposed addendum, all very good feedback. I, I'm not, I don't want anyone to like turn around and be like, oh, she didn't get what she wanted, she's insulted. I'm not. I think it's awesome. So I would say, I would love to table this, see how it goes and then do some kind of like, some, you know, metrics on, is it actually working and how do the kids feel and, and how do the parents feel? But the one thing I do want to make sure we understand is, we want the kids to be safe and we want the kids to feel, there's, there's so much research, if we're going to talk about what's going on in the news is, you know, kids' self-esteem and kids' anxiety and kids' depression. And that's what we, we need to make sure that we're also taking that into consideration. Is this helping or are we wrong and is it hurting? And if it's hurting, obviously we need to readdress it, but if it's helping, then it will just make me support what it is and, you know, even more. So thank you for letting me speak.
All right. You're welcome. Beth Hut Wagner?
Uh, totally agree. I think we, I, I mean, I was just asking those questions kind of to get people to think, but I, I think we do need to let it play out, see what happens. And I think the survey is really smart and I would love to be able to survey the teachers as well as the students because I think it's important to get their feedback as I'm thinking they're going to be the ones kind of on the, on the front line of dealing or not dealing with it. So I would want to make sure that we have their input as well. And then, you know, I think we work together really well as a committee and I think, I think we'll be prepared to change it in whatever way is best for making all our students feel safe emotionally, physically at school.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Brummett?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo that we are prepared to move forward with the current dress code as written for the fall. And then, as many board members have stated, it can be revisited if enough, you know, if there are concerns and we can bring data forward from disciplinary referrals, feedback from administration. To make, to make a change now would be, we'd have to do it fairly instantaneously in order to make modifications to dress codes that are going out now or being prepped for teachers coming back. And training is slated to happen in August 22nd as one of the items, many items that we're doing. So time is of the essence, so I think waiting till the fall and getting feedback may be advisable.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brummett. And Richard Laverrier?
Thank you. Dr. Fletcher, I think that if we, there's nothing that's stopping us from sending out a dress code as it is currently written and making a change on before, on or before the first day of school. I think that waiting until September and a change till October is a, is a bad idea because when you give somebody a right, it's awfully hard to take it away from them. I think that's a bad idea, sir. Okay? And, um, yeah. We, we, if we're, to Dr. Brummett's point, she was, she was making points about collecting data, the language of the, of the policy as currently written itself, where the, the teachers aren't supposed to approach the students, it's supposed to be approached as a minor infraction. I'm not very confident in the data in general at that point, based on the language as it's written. I, this is something that requires a special meeting. Sorry, it's summer vacation, I know. But I think that this is something that requires a special meeting between now and before school. And you know what? So be it. You send out, if a change is made and you send out something that has language that's been updated, hey, this is, this is modified, corrected, whatever you want to call it, language to the dress code. I think that this is something that cannot wait until an October policy review. Impossible idea. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your input. Right now, we have a motion on the table to table this particular item discussion, even though we haven't made the motion concerning the addendum. So I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll related to tabling this to a future date. We're not setting a date tonight either.
Michael Branda?
Yeah.
Danielle Droes?
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Manki Hut Wagner?
Yes.
Richard Laverrier?
As only stated, yes.
Amy Parati?
Yes.
Sam Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Weaver?
Yes.
Anastasia Yap?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay. So all discussion related to regulation 5137, uh, 5132 is now closed. It's on the table. It's been tabled. Okay. Ms. Parati?
Thanks, Dr. Fletcher. And I apologize, but I would like to make a motion to amend dress code policy 5132.
All right. And we discussed this earlier, so please go ahead and make the, make your motion.
You want me to make the actual motion?
Yep.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to amend dress code policy 5132 by changing the word breasts to chest on page two, under the basic dress code, part one B.
And that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Did I hear it? Okay. Mr. Branda has seconded it. Any discussion? Ms. Droes?
I want to thank you, Ms. Parati, for, we looked through these a million times. So to pick up on that, gender neutral word is awesome. I know that men technically have breasts too, but we refer to them as chest. So I like it as being much more gender neutral. So I do appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? For this amendment, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Branda?
Yes.
Danielle Droes?
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Manki Hut Wagner? Richard Laverrier?
Yes.
Amy Parati?
Yes.
Sam Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Weaver?
Yes.
Anastasia Yap?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
And that ends our new business. And at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion for this board to move into executive session.
Motion to move into, motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Is made. Motion has been seconded. Can we call the roll?
Michael Branda?
Yes.
Danielle Droes?
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Manki Hut Wagner?
Yes.
Richard Laverrier?
He may have left.
He left.
Amy Parati?
Yes.
Sam Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Weaver?
Yes.
Anastasia Yap?
Yes.
Everyone is, well, the motion passed unanimously eight to zero, I guess, or?
Okay.
Mr. Laverrier?
So at this time, we're going to close out of this public session. Only board members now and those that have been invited will join us in executive session. We will come back out of executive session into the public. And if you are still with us, those of you in the public, you can come back and join us at that time. No guarantee on how long it will be.
And Dr. Fletcher, board members are going to log into a separate Google Meet.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. You received that today. Ms. Gregg?
I have a question. Do you want me to keep this meeting open then and you'll come back later?
Yes, please. Let's do that.
But I will stop the recording while we're in exec session.
Okay.
Okay. Executive session. So all our board members should be in here right now. So at this time, I'm going to ask for the recommended motion to be read for item D1, which is the contract ratification for the local 818-64.
I can move the motion, Dr. Fletcher.
Please do that. Thank you.
Move to approve the agreement between the Board of Education of the Town of Newington and the local 818-64 of Council Number Four, ASME, AFL-CIO, Non-Instructional Administrators, Initial Collective Bargaining Agreement Effective Upon Signing and Continuing Through June 30th, 2026.
All right. We have a motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. We've already had our discussion in executive session. Are there further comments that need to be made by any board members? I want to make sure that I'm following procedures correctly. Mr. Laverrier? Without discussing the elements of the contract yet?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I want to say thank you to every Newington teacher, paraprofessional administrator for the great job that you've done this past year. You are charged with leading our students into the future and I thank you for it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll save the rest of the comments for the end of the meeting here. Right now, we have a motion before us that's been made and seconded. So I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll at this time.
Michael Branda?
Yes.
Danielle Droes?
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Manki Hut Wagner? Richard Laverrier? Amy Parati?
Yes.
Sam Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Weaver?
Yes.
Anastasia Yap?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously nine zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. Now we're moving on to item D2, which is the superintendent's contract. And I will ask for somebody to please read the motion.
I have it.
Okay, go ahead.
Move, move the Newington Board of Education, approve the contract for Dr. Maureen Alvarmet Brummett as superintendent as well as effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Second.
And I have a second. Okay. All right. Are there any further questions related to that or clarification that we, nothing that we discussed in executive session, please? Okay. Going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Branda?
Yes.
Danielle Droes?
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Manki Hut Wagner?
Yes.
Richard Laverrier? Amy Parati?
Yes.
Sam Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Weaver?
Yes.
And Anastasia Yap?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Excellent. That concludes our, our new business. And at this time, we're going to go to agenda item E, which is public participation. We welcome any member of the public to participate. We will give you three minutes. You can call in. I don't know if the call-in works actually right now because of the situation, but if you are here with us, just raise your hand. When I call on you, you can give us your name and the street that you live on. And again, I want to remind you that it is limited to three minutes. So we'll wait a moment.
And the call-in would work, Dr. Fletcher? It's related to the Google Meet, if anyone were to call in.
Oh, it is related to it?
It would, yes.
Okay. And it is.
It doesn't look like anyone's calling in.
We're going to move on now to agenda item F, final remarks by board members. If you wish to do so, please do so by raising your hand.
Dr. Brummett, thanks for putting up with me this year. That's all I got.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, especially it's summertime and I know it's hard to get everybody together. So it's good to see you guys. Hopefully next time we meet, it'll be in person. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And Jessica Weaver?
Not to prolong this, but I just want to sincerely thank all of our board members who serve on respective committees, obviously with negotiations, but also those who wrote Dr. Brummett's evaluation. Some of the behind the scenes work that, you know, just takes time to be able to make these come to fruition, the several meetings, the lots of hours. Just want to thank all the time that you put into that so that we have, you know, good products and just appreciate the time that you put in on all of your committees. It's greatly appreciated. And I, for those I serve on and those I don't serve on, I thank you all for that. And for Dr. Fletcher and Dr. Brummett's leadership, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Danielle Drozd?
I just, I want to, you know, I'm, I'm a little speechless, Dr. Fletcher, which is not usually my thing. But I just want to say that I want to thank that this board. When I was on the board previously, we always said that we were going to be non, you know, bipartisan, we're going to be bipartisan. And I know Jess Weaver and I had that conversation at the beginning of the year. I'm like, I will vote the way I want to vote. But through this whole thing of, you know, kind of getting a little like beat up because I was the committee chair and a lot of misinformation being sent out there, the amount of support and feeling like I could have conversations and we came together, even, you know, executive session, we can't share, but we came together, we had conversations. It is just a breath of relief and I, and I just, I really, really, really truly appreciate the help and the support through the process. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other board members? Excellent. I want to say thank you to all of you for the time that you committed for tonight. I mean, our meetings are typically long, but they are productive. I want to thank you all for your input and all that has been done and said tonight. Congratulations to the O85, the people from that, the new contract and the new contract for Dr. Brummett. Congratulations on that. We want to thank you sincerely. Thank you for all the hard work that you do. And I want you to know that I appreciate you, but I also appreciate each and every one of you board members because you don't get paid a whole lot to do this. But a lot of times you get a whole lot of grief. And thank you for, for doing what you do. And, you know, thank you for what you're doing for our community. So with that said, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, just say good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night, everybody. Good night.